Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Stanyes.
Here. Here. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any old business before us? Under new business, we have a request of a Class C, which is an onsite beer permit for James Yonkin. Address, home address is 110 Dartmouth Circle in Oak Ridge for the Rabbit Hole located at 368 Market Street. Mr. Yonkin, you'd like to approach the podium, again, to state your name and address?
I will.
I tell you, those things are becoming more and more popular, aren't they?
I know. It's a bad situation. Greetings, everyone. My name's James Yonkin. Go by Jim. I live at 110 Dartmouth Circle in Oak Ridge, Tennessee. Been a property owner on Market Street for eighteen years. So I've seen eighteen parades and look forward to the one upcoming. I am requesting a Class C on-premise beer permit for a restaurant. That restaurant is The Rabbit Hole at 368 Market Street.
Any questions for Jim?
I have one, and just a clarification. If my memory serves me right, there was an issue with the establishment, with the Rabbit Hole, a year or so ago. What can you tell me? I don't think it had anything to do with you personally, but what can you tell me about that, and has that been resolved?
So unfortunately, that establishment never had a license, liquor license, liquor by the drink license issued by the state of Tennessee. A document was received that was received, perceived as the appropriate permit. I can say that the ladies involved had no intention of not doing any kind of illegal activities of any kind. It was just, I've got that document here. I'd look at it today and say, I still don't know what it is. It says, "Basic permit," has a Tennessee serial number on it. You know, it just doesn't say from Tennessee, A, B, C. But I do know on that day, we got our beer, we got our liquor permit, and then it, you know, doors opened, the way it went.
Did the state agency charge you all with the establishment with any crimes or wrongdoing?
They were charged, but all those charges were dismissed, I believe, and only court costs were, had to be paid. It's my understanding.
Are you selling liquor now?
No.
So it's just gonna be selling beer?
Yes, sir. For now, yes.
Are you seeking to maybe add wine in the future, or?
Haven't really thought about it. I mean, it's always an option. I think that I've been going a step at a time with this and not getting ahead of myself. I have been in conversation with people that, and we've talked about it, but nothing definite.
Have you got any messages from the state level in regards to liquor license for, a future liquor license for the establishment? Is that gonna be something you can do, or they said you can't do, or?
Well, they keep moving the goalposts on me on that one. So at present, no.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
At present, they're saying no, for me, even me, even me obtaining a liquor license for that establishment.
So what's there?
Just because of my association, marital association, and...
So right now, the state's saying no liquor license?
That's correct.
Roger, you want to add anything to this?
The chief backwards did the background check, the TV hat, and the thing almost beyond them was good on that. Also, we just double-checked since there was an issue with city attorney and the MTS attorney both. And they felt like Mr. Yonkin was not involved in the previous one, and there was no reason that we could deny at this point.
You related to Steve Yonkin?
I am. Number two son.
Okay. Well, that speaks well for you.
I was about to say, is that, is that a hurt or help in this case?
Tremendous help.
Depending on if you were big into Clinton basketball, I guess, right?
Yeah.
A lot of basketball games.
I know your son well. He's a fine young man, and I appreciate his friendship.
I appreciate that very much. Always good to hear.
Any other thoughts or questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I, am I being overly cautious with expressing concern with, I mean, with the state? Liquor and beer, I know, are two different things, but is that a concern? I mean, am I...
Well, it kind of, it kind of surprised me that he said that, because from what our legal advice was from MTS was, we have no justification internal day on because they were never charged, which I, I respect that, and I agree with that, but...
Yet the state is.
But the state is taking a different approach by not giving them a liquor license because you're association with the original licensee.
It's not like their slate has been wiped clean. I mean, there's something there.
I think it's what you said, the distinction between beer and liquor.
But what gives them the authority to do what they're doing and then ask, you know, I guess my question is, is...
Statutory at the state level, the reason why we don't grant liquor permits. Yeah, I'd say that's the distinction.
But, but, but we're just having a discussion here, but, but to your point is, they were never charged, or they were charged, but the, the charges were drawn.
Well, the, the MTS opinion considered what the district attorney did at a local level, but the district attorney has nothing to do with what the ABC group is doing at the state level. And so when we talk about proceedings and, and, you know, litigation and charges, you gotta think, well, where are they being charged? They're not being charged over there in that courthouse in Judge Spitzer's courtroom. They're, they're at some form at the state level, which I'm assuming is probably more administrative in nature, not, I don't know, I mean, I don't know where they're at. If they're at Davidson County Circuit Court, I don't know, but...
Well, I think the bottom line is that the, the, the body that we reference to from a legal opinion kind of pretty much stated where we can go and what our options are. And I think, based on those recommendations, that I would approve a beer license, personally. That's, I think we had a good discussion, but I think at the end of the day, I think Zach brought up a very good point. It's the difference between local and state. Maybe that we, they're, they're looking at things that we don't look at and don't have the opportunity to look at. So... Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, I will say, we, I say it to everyone, since I've been up here, and the council supports it too. If you get one strike, then it's, you're gonna get hit hard. It's not a three-strike deal. You're gonna probably be fined $1,500. And, and maybe, it depends on how severe the abuse was, even maybe even have conversations about taking the license back. So just want to let you know. Thank you. Good luck to you. Hear a motion to adjourn the beer board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Beer board meeting adjourned. Open up for regular council meeting. Roll call, please.
Public hearing.
Oh, public.
Public hearing.
Is there a public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got too many pages floating around here. For, for a public hearing, roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stanyes.
Hey, hey.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here.
Here. Public hearing today is on ordinance number 676. This is rezoning R2 to R3 on West Broad Street. Larry, would you like to speak on that?
That is a, that is a PUD up here, several lots that they're wanting to adjourn and, and get rezoned so that they can turn it into residences.
Yeah. Anybody one here would like to speak on, on ordinance number 676? Any comments from the council?
It's a little bit of a divergent PUD. It's, it's been a complicated one, and we think we've worked our way through it.
And it's gonna be a, I mean, it's gonna be some very nice duplexes. I think that the individual plans on renting those. And it's gonna be at a very much of a fair market price, which is gonna, you know, it's, it's gonna take care of one single white trailer that we have up there. In fact, he's taking care of two that's, that's still in the city. And I think everything he's done, I always reference the, the house next to the left side of Apple Blossom that he's bought and redone. He also redid the one there on Broad Street. It looks like he does a very nice job, and, and it certainly builds value to our community.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Stanyes. Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
You want to ask me? Yes. I just, do we, did we need to do a motion on that?
No, not the public hearing.
Okay. Hold, hold that thought. That was just a run, that was a dry run. I've only been doing this for thirteen years, so I'll get that, get up in here pretty soon. Hear a motion for the public hearing adjourned? Public hearings adjourned. Regular agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stanyes.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion of approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Vice Mayor Fair. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
We're gonna get ET up and stand for the prayer. He wanted to do that in Stanford for the pledge. All right, ET, let's go Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, bless this city that we live in, and Lord, bless this council that's here to make decisions on behalf of this city. Lord, we, in this spirit of Thanksgiving, in this season of Thanksgiving, give thanks today for our city schools. They're so, so outstanding and precious to us all. The people that work there, the kids that go there, the parents that are involved. Lord, we pray in Thanksgiving for our Main Street program. Lord, may it continue to grow and prosper our downtown and our city at large. Lord, I want to also give thanks to our local businesses and our commerce. It's great to, to live in a small town with, with businesses that we all know, and, and it just makes us a stronger community, and we give thanks to you, God, for that. Lord, I want to also give thanks to this new council that has been coming, elected, and be with this council that's coming up. And Lord, be with our mayor, lead, guide, and direct him, and strengthen him in all your goodness. Finally, Lord, thanks be to God for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and may he be with us all this Christmas season. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Zach. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated October 24th, 2022?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This time, we'll hear for any grievances or praises from citizens. If you'd like to come to the podium to state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Kayla Simon. I work at 131 South Charles G. Severs Boulevard, but I live at 5,000 Western Avenue. But I'm the executive director for ASAP of Anderson. I think normally Jared comes here to y'all's city council, but he's unfortunately sick with whatever's going around. So I wanted to introduce y'all to our new prevention coordinator, Savannah Mead. She'll be focusing on opioid stimulants and over-the-counter medication, policy and advocacy, as well as education in the school system. So I'll let her introduce herself. Hi, as Kayla said, I'm Savannah Mead. I live at 146 Garden Service Road in Norris, and I work at 131 Charles G. Severs Boulevard. I'm a lifelong Anderson County resident. I went to South Clinton Elementary, Clinton Middle School, Clinton High School, lived here my whole life. Went to MTSU in Middle Tennessee, and now I'm back and just really excited to be a resource for the community I grew up in. So, nice to meet all of you all.
Great. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Under communications for the mayor, first of all, for, yet, I'd like to introduce our soon-to-be new councilman on council, Winnie Manus. He's here to give a wave here, and everybody knows David Queener. So look forward to y'all coming on board next month. I'm not gonna try to take too much of your, of your information you're gonna share, Catherine, but I do want to say that we, we have several things going on this month, of course, in December. Have the Christmas parade on the third of December, starts at six o'clock. We have a tree lighting this Friday at the community center for our tree lighting, and also a chili cook-off. Do you have anything else to add with that, JB? Is it pretty much, is that pretty much it? Any other activities? Got any blow-ups or bounce houses or anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Did you mention axe throw?
Axe throw.
Axe throw? I thought I read that.
Hope not. Also, at our December meeting, there'll be some open positions on our boards and committees. For example, there's some on the Housing Authority. There's gonna be an opening there, Recreation Advisory Committee, Tree Committee, Community Action, and also on School Board. So if you have any interest in that, please submit a resume and what you'd like to, what you'd like to be put in the hat for, what your qualifications are, and just bring that to City Hall, and they'll, they'll give it to the right people. So, and again, we'll be doing that at our December meeting. Also, I'd like to read a news release from the Government Finance Officers Association. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Clinton for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. This is, I've read this for six, six consecutive years, and I don't know how many cities or counties governments has had that for six years. I'd say it's very, very strong.
It's a very tough achievement to get for one year, let alone six years. So of course, that was Gil Cook's last one, and as I've told Chris, no pressure on him now. Go for year seven.
Chris, I was gonna give you a part of this one, man. You're here. What's Gil's last name? No, but she's watching. She may be. I don't know, but certainly congratulations to her, and, and I know that will, that will continue. So, nice, nice recognition. That is, that's all I have. So we'll move on to the community reports. City School Board report. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. A couple of Clinton City updates for you this, this evening. We are currently entering our last three weeks before the first semester ends, and so we're beginning our mid-year benchmark testing. Actually, that started today. And so we look forward to seeing the growth that the students have made during the first semester. Our last Blaze basketball home game is gonna be on December the 12th. That will be in the Airwood Arena at Clinton Elementary School. We will be honoring all of our sixth-grade Blaze participants in cross-country swim, color guard, basketball, cheer, and dance. And so then we will, our final, final event will be in January where we do the staff-student ballgame. And that is always a blast. That will be in January, and we do our annual reminder to Scott Ray that he is playing children. He is not playing adults. And so I have to give that reminder to him every single year. But things at Clinton City are going great. Things seem to be back to normal. We are, we are just holding school fast and furious. Can't believe half of the year is over with. But I wanted to take the majority of my report tonight just to, to really show appreciation to all of city council, but in particular, the work that Zach and ET have done on behalf of Clinton City Schools during their time serving on the council. We have been together now, I think this is my eighth year, and so you all have been a part of that council for, for all eight years. I will say that this particular council has always, anytime Clinton City Schools has come to you all, you all have embraced us and you have supported us in any way, with any help that we have needed, and it is a true partnership. And I do attribute the school board and city council as a big part of the success of Clinton City Schools. So on behalf, I want to thank each of you, but in particularly ET and Zach, since this will be the, the last time that you officially hear a Clinton City report. I want to just express appreciation to you serving on city council and supporting Clinton City Schools. As you know, my daddy is near and dear to my heart, and I will always be a daddy's girl. And he always ended his sermons the same way, or ended his benediction the same way in front of First Baptist Church. And he would always say, "May the Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face to shine upon you and be gracious unto you. The Lord lift his countenance upon you and give you peace." So that is my prayer for the two of you all as you start this new chapter. We do have a little something on behalf of Clinton City Schools that we would like to give you at this time. Many thanks to Jim McBride's Clinton Drug Store for helping us achieve this today.
Shop local.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I know you're getting two really, really good ones. One in particular, David Queener has been with me for eight years on the school board. And it is with a very, very heavy heart that I gift him to you all, but you all are definitely getting a gem who will fight hard for Clinton City Schools. And I've gotten to know Wendy at a couple of functions as she has, as she has run her election. And there is no doubt she's a South Clinton mom, so she'll be a strong supporter of Clinton City Schools, too. So that concludes my report. Any questions?
You have Scott coming up?
I do? No, I don't. No budget amendment. So even though Scott Ray today, you're welcome, guys.
I just want to say thank you, Kelly. I appreciate it.
No, that's fine. We'll see you in January. See you in, see you in January. Powerpoint. Our PowerPoint's down. We'll get it fixed for you. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann.
The BZA, the Board of Zoning and Appeals, and the Regional Planning Commission both met on October 17th. The BZA had two items that were both withdrawn, so that was a, a light night. The Planning Commission did have two items dealing with the same issue. John Davenport requesting final plat review and approval for property located at Doe Run Boulevard, Charles Severs Boulevard. And this is for Title Wave Auto Spa, and then also preliminary site plan review. This is for a upscale car washing service, and that was approved by, by the Planning Commission. And then applicant William Underwood requesting annexation for property on Long Meyer Road. And that wanted to sign to B2, and this item was withdrawn also. And then advanced engineering, Marty Murphy requesting final site plan review and approval for Title Wave, which was the same piece of business that we dealt with before, and that was approved. And that's all we had. It was a light buck.
Any questions for Larry? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board report, Vice Mayor Fair.
Yes, CUB, the board met on November 10th, 2022, and in that we approved some purchase orders, a work order, and approved a recommendation to city council to approve the tax-equivalent payments for this fiscal year. Also, we noted that, that there was over $700,000 in expenses associated with the storms in July, which has really hit the budget a little bit, but by end of the budget cycle, we expect to catch that up. And other than that, I just, that was it. Other than, are we gonna appoint a new?
We will in December.
Okay.
Any questions for Zach? Thank you, Zach. Thank you for what you did on CUB, too.
Thank you.
Larry, do we have any other board and committee reports before Catherine comes up?
No. The only thing I can think of, and I wish I had the details, but there was a grant given to Green McAdoo. I'm trying to remember how much and from whom, but we did get a grant to help us with Green McAdoo and some of the projects they're involved in.
Is there some type of match? Do you remember?
No, I think it's just a pure grant, as far as I know.
Great. Thank you. Catherine?
Good evening, guys. As Mayor Burton mentioned, we have a lot going on in the month of December, starting with the Christmas parade that is this Saturday. And contrary to some of the rumors that were out there, you are able to throw candy and collect candy at the Christmas parade. The merchants are also gonna be having their cookie crawl on December 10th. And thank you to the city for allowing us to have our Christmas stroll this past Saturday. It was a huge success. I heard so many people talk about what a Hallmark movie the city of Clinton is, and I couldn't agree more. So thank you for allowing us to kick off the holiday season with that. The Green Space Initiative that you guys gave money to, if you go to the back parking lot, you'll see it's all curbed out. Wadescapes landscaping is putting in the irrigation today, and then we'll start to fill that with dirt. And you should see the completion of that in the next week and a half or two. So it's very exciting right there. Right now, we have entered phase two of our walking tour, so we have just ordered eight more signs that will go on private property. So some of the businesses and some of the historical homes downtown will have new signs to go along with our walking tour. And lastly, I'm excited to announce that Historic Downtown Clinton has received the Downtown Improvement Grant from the state of Tennessee, which is a $70,000 grant. You'll see all of the information that we submitted to the state in the packets that I left you. There's a 25% match, and that comes from the property owners. So while we get $70,000 for those improvements, it's over $100,000 worth of improvements that will be happening to five of the buildings in the downtown area. So that will begin in January. And lastly, I'm no Kelly Johnson, so I don't have gifts for you, but I do also want to thank ET and Zach for your service on city council. You guys were a huge part of allowing Main Street to come to fruition, and you supported the Main Street program and all the crazy ideas I threw at you, and it would not be possible without the two of you in the city council. So thank you so much for your support on that. And that's it.
Thank you.
Catherine, did you have a couple of questions on the facade grant?
No, she answered.
She, okay.
I saw you all looking through it, and I thought, they're gonna think I'm asking for money, more money, so I'm happy to report that we've got money elsewhere for you.
We would never, we would never think that.
Never.
So when, when will this stuff start?
So our contract will start in January. So when the buildings do the work, they submit the receipts to us, and then we pay them, and then we get reimbursed through the state. It's, it's an 18-month contract, so it may take a little while, but...
When do the Tasty Tuesdays, is there one this Tuesday?
I'm glad you asked, 'cause I left that out. It starts tomorrow, back on Market Street. So yes, we'll have food trucks, music. We'll be playing. The shops are staying open late. We're actually doing a merchants appreciation night, so we're buying dinner for the employees that stay open late tomorrow night. And we'll have about eight food trucks on Market Street from four to 7:00 PM.
So these next three weeks, we'll be on Market Street and not in the back parking lot?
Yes, on Market Street. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Lobster dogs tomorrow, too, by the way. Very good. If you can afford it. Eat before you go, the lobster dogs. Anyway, very good. Moving on. Anyway, very good. Um, moving on, General Governor Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just an update on some current projects and activities. Harbor Drive, we completed the paving last week, so the street is paved. Uh, Public Works will be continuing for the next week or two, doing some drainage improvements. And we still lack the striping. Rogers Group will come back and stripe it. So that once again, this is another 40-year-old problem that, uh, we finally got corrected and solved. And if you've not been over there, there's some really nice houses going in. So it's, uh, been an improvement. Uh, Riverside Drive also opened back up two weeks ago. So under the bridge, you can turn off of, um, South Severs Boulevard, left there at Lakefront Park. Go under the bridge to be on Riverside River Bend. We've opened part of the parking lot back up, the new parking lot under the bridge. We have not opened the boat ramp. Uh, we're missing some guard rail that has to be put up. Uh, hopefully just any day we can get that put up and we will add three streetlights to the area down there too. So it's, it really looks nice though. If you haven't been down there, check it out.
Is the running path open?
Yes, the path is open. We've opened it back up too. So it's good, good to go. Um, General Governance, the swearing-in ceremony for the newly elected and re-elected council members will be this Friday, December 2nd at 9:00 AM. We'll do a small reception afterwards. Um, due to the holiday schedule, we recommend changing the December council meeting to Friday, December the 16th at 1:30. We'll also have the employee lunch at 11:30 AM before that at the community center.
Is, um, is that okay with everybody's schedule?
What's that date?
Um, December 16th, Friday, at 1:30?
You need to make a motion.
Yeah.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Finance, I'll defer to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So as of the end of October, we're officially one-third of the way through our fiscal year. That's hard to believe as well, because it's full year, being almost half done. Um, we are on track with our, our revenues. Something to note about our revenues, in October, October, we received the second round and final round of the, um, ARPA funds. So that $1.4 million in revenue was received and that, that closes that out. And that's, that was, um, something that the city chose to use as revenue replenishment, uh, from, from the effects of COVID. Um, expenditure-wise, we are literally within a tenth of where we should be as far as the year goes. We're at 33.4% of our expenditures. Additionally, on, on, uh, speaking of the audit and the, and the good report we just got, uh, just this week, we're finishing up the final draft of the fiscal year 22 audit. Things look really good there. Obviously you, you should, you would expect that, uh, with Ms. Cook in charge. Um, so things will be finalized and hopefully we'll have an audit, an actual document for you in December. And then finally, uh, just to note, uh, sales tax, just to report how we're doing there. That's an important part of our revenue stream. We're up almost 17% from the same month, uh, last year. So we are at, um, about 1.3 million in, in revenues just for this current fiscal year.
Any questions for Chris? You know, I was looking back even last year, I think we have seven straight months now being over $400,000 each month. And it was, it wasn't too long ago, we had our first one of those. And so it's, it's been pretty consistent.
You're correct. Seven straight months over $400,000.
So Chris, is there anything on the report that is starting to pop out? Any concerns?
No, I don't think so. Um, I think, you know, the city is, uh, just like mentioning Harbor Drive, the city is taking care of some of the bigger capital expenditures, uh, this year. Where I'll be bringing you a budget amendment in January to catch up, you know, some of the paperwork with some of the approvals that you've done, but, um, not, not, nothing negative out of the order. Uh, it's kind of really been just positive. Anything that's, um, been going on, revenues are strong and expenditures, the departments are doing a great job with keeping within their budget, watching overtime, watching their, their other costs. So we're pleased with that.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Um, on finances, while we're talking about it, the in lieu of resolution that we're gonna be talking about, 827, Resolution 827 here in a few minutes. I did have a discussion and I'll go ahead and explain it now with, uh, General Manager Greg Fa, a couple of weeks ago. Um, their payment in lieu of this year's will be down about 1.8% over last year, which that was not a figure that we had budgeted on. And that 1.8% equals about $231,000. So that's will be somewhat of a shortfall of revenue, um, unexpected. But as Chris just said, our sales tax is doing real well, so I think we, we're more than enough to cover, cover the shortfall there. The, the reason for the decrease, and Chris can help me explain this, Gil's had to explain it to me a couple of times, is the state came out with a new equalization factor last spring. And we talked about it last spring because it affected our budget some. And that is just a, a number that they come out with and it's nothing that CUB's done. It's nothing that we've done, nothing that can be done about it. It's just the, the state's new number that, that they have to plug into their formula and it caused a reduction. And this reduction will probably be for the next two or three years before we start seeing it going back up.
Now, is this reduction for the, for every county and city that's affected by, that gets this lieu of taxes?
My understanding.
The pockets has gotten smaller.
That's correct.
Okay, this is not us. And it's not, is it like the CUB can keep more of it or is it, is it go somewhere else?
So their, the equalization factor for this year is something like 78%. So 100% would be whatever you're assessed, that's what you pay. So it was assessed at 78% of that. So yes, technically, CUB will be paying less than they would have if there was not an equalization factor. And what they try to do with that is as property tax values go up, property values go up, you know, they try to keep things smooth with, with the personal property tax. And so that's how they can, I guess artificially keep it within reason is to, uh, calculate what a, an equalization factor is to equalize that so that it, their businesses aren't charged an egregious amount in their, in their opinion for their personal property within their businesses.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chris.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Any questions for Roger?
I do. Uh, I had mentioned this to, uh, Mr. Murphy and I know he sent an email, uh, to the state regarding the turn lane going westbound Charles Severs, turning onto the new bridge.
Yes.
Okay. So you pass that intersection, which is what? The new intersection that just opened. What's the name of that street?
Clenchamane.
No, the new intersection where they had it, right beside the ball fields.
Riverside.
Riverside. Okay. So if you are going toward Oak Ridge, you want to turn, go that way, so I'm talking. If you turn and go toward, and you pass the Riverside, there's a turn lane.
Yeah, I remember.
For Riverside.
Yes.
Which needs to be there.
Yes.
But then, there is a, there is a turn lane that goes into the back of Fox Toyota, the old Fox Toyota, which is now Rusty Wallace Chevrolet. And my point was, is that basically, right now, you have a lot of people, and I know Police Chief probably knows exactly what I'm talking about. You have people that are going, so that we can stack up two lanes going across the new bridge.
I'll follow up with Lynn. I remember our conversation.
But it's just like, I mean, why does that business, and I don't think they would care, but why does that business have a turn lane? They could very easily take those double stripes off, move them over and we could stack up two full lanes going across the New Green Bridge toward North.
Was that turn lane when Duncan was still open?
No.
It was in the back entrance?
Does everybody know what I'm talking about?
Kind of into the old body shop where Fox Toyota was.
Has anybody ever turned there? I mean, I guess.
I don't think they want you to. I don't think the business, I don't, I think they deter that. I think they sometimes have a chain across through there.
I'll check back with Lynn and see, see if he ever got a reply.
But I think from, that'd be just a good thing to do and that way you can, right now, you're breaking the law if you switch over there and go too far, right Chief?
That's right.
Not that I've been caught.
Caught. Caught's the word. Caught's the word, right?
Just asking for a friend.
Roger, on your, the project list you put in here, can you give us an update on those? I know our December meeting will be pretty, uh, quick usually. Things we're gonna plan on for next year. Of course, the traffic signals, um, at North Charles Severs Boulevard, they actually started installing the arms today, or no, tomorrow. It will start tomorrow installing, installing the lanes there at Doe Run Boulevard, then they'll move on up. Got a little bit of conflict with some power poles on, um, Hillvale and Tanner. So, but the, but, but that's starting to happen there. Harbor Drive, like I said, we're pretty much, um, wrapping that up. Phase one and two of the tap grant, uh, we got an update last month. They're hoping to have all the clearances by sometime in January, February and be able to go to bid this spring and har, hopefully start construction sometime late spring or early summer. Um, LPR grant, LPRF grant for the JC pool, we met, we finally got the notice to proceed to go ahead and hire the architect, engineer, uh, about three and a half weeks ago. So we had about a half-day meeting, uh, with staff and, and a couple of architects, engineers up at the pool. And they came back down here and laid some stuff out. So they're, they're in the process of putting, putting the specs together, plans together and hopefully we could maybe put that out to bid sometime after first of the year also. Uh, Old Armory, kinda on hold. We've got the one grant to do it. We just got, got these other projects going, so we haven't really started it. Um, fire truck, dump trucks, those have been ordered, community center upgrades. We've did a walkthrough on that and kinda did a punch list, but once again, that's, that's something we wanna get started on. Just, just kinda got some of these other projects ahead of it. And that's the main ones, I guess, that we're looking at right now. Some of those others will be probably later on down the road next year.
Thank you. Um, I had a couple of questions. The, when's the boat launch gonna be available to be up and parking gonna be available? For the, for the trailers?
Well, the boat ramp, soon as we can get the guardrail installed, we'll open it up. So it could be this week.
Are they gonna be able to park this, where the, where it's going to be parking or are they gonna park somewhere else?
No, we'll go, we'll actually with the, where the old bowl used to be, that we call it. Right now, they've still got some equipment stored there. Once they get that equipment out of there, we'll finish grading it, add some more gravel to it. Probably for now, we're just gonna leave it gravel.
Correct, Wayne.
We're just gonna leave it gravel. We'll make the boat and trailer parking over there. The parking lot under the bridge, the way it's designed, there's just, there's no way boats and trailers can park there. It's just too small. And if it does, I mean, two or three trailers would take up half the parking lot.
So I guess my question is, if it's, if it's gonna be open, should we even try to open it until the parking's available?
Well, hopefully they'll get the rest of that stuff cleaned out of there too pretty soon. I mean, there, there's really no reason, I think they shouldn't.
But there's still gonna, but there's still gonna be a gap between the, the, the launch opening and the parking of being available. Just something to think about. I mean, it's.
Well, you know, right now, it's probably not, not that big a deal for the next month or two if they do put a boat there. But once softball season starts, is when it's gonna be a major issue.
All right. So Von's not gonna give me any tickets? They've parked.
No, and it's actually myself and JB and Lynn's gonna meet down there in the morning and look at what signage we need and maybe even put some arrows down coming in and out and kinda directing people.
Okay. Also wanna brag on JB, um, he looked surprised a little bit, but, but the, um, but the disc golf. You know, the disc golf was a, a quiet opening, uh, but, uh, looks, looks very, very nice. I know you're gonna get some publicity out there, get things on the web, but a really nice job with that. And something, um, you'll like this, Zach, you know, I've been talking about it for about three years. His next, next thing on the agenda is pickleball court.
Yes.
So we're gonna get that.
I can't take everything. A lot, a lot of the stuff Dwayne and Public Works helped me with. So my guys did a lot of work out there, but, uh, Dwayne's bunch helped me with a bunch of stuff.
Absolutely.
On the whole thing. So.
Yeah. Good teamwork.
The golf, disc golf, been a huge success.
Didn't you buy a stencil? You gonna try to do the pickleball?
We got the stencil.
Go ahead and try to do a couple of them in-house. You gotta get the Christmas tree up.
I gotta get.
It's supposed to rain Wednesday.
Backup.
Maybe Thursday.
Backup. It's already been up once.
Any other questions for Roger? Thanks, Roger. Um, under ordinances and resolutions, we have, um, second and final reading of ordinance number 676. This is rezoning R2 to R3 on West Broad Street. Here a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Stamey.
Good.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Farah.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes. Ordinance number 676 passes on second and final reading. Under adoption of resolutions, Resolution Number 827, this is CUB in lieu of tax payments for the year ending 6/30/23. Here a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Stamey. Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Farah.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes. Resolution Number 827 passes on first and final reading. Um, we have a couple of resolutions to give out tonight and the first one, I asked a couple of councilmen to, to do these and, um, and I thought they would appreciate doing this, but I wanna have, um, Larry Gann read, um, Resolution Number 828 on behalf of, you have the, you have the copy?
I've got a copy.
For ET.
It's, it's, I guess I told the mayor, it's kinda bittersweet. ET and I started that years ago, I guess, playing baseball against each other. Uh, that is a year or two ago. Uh, I think I played for the Garden and he played for the Cubs. It's been a while. I think we split, yeah. Uh, the body, when mine doesn't remember. Resolution 828, we, the city council and citizens of Clinton, Tennessee, commend and recognize ET Stamey for his selfless service to the citizens of Clinton. Whereas ET Stamey has been a vital part of Clinton City Council, having served from December 2010 to November 2022, dedicating his time to the best interest of the community and working constantly for the betterment of its economic and cultural development. And whereas the city has benefited greatly because of his contributions to Clinton City Schools, as father of the Blaze Sports, serving as the athletic director for the school system. And whereas throughout, throughout the performance of his duties and responsibilities as a member of the city council, he has made excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. And whereas ET has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and of his fellow public service, servants. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Clinton, Tennessee, that this resolution be a special means of commending ET Stamey on his exemplary service to the city of Clinton and express our sincere appreciation as well as that of our citizens to ET for his distinguished service to our community. Be it further resolved that this resolution be placed upon the minutes of this body in recognition of Councilman Stamey and his many contributions to the city of Clinton, adopted this 28th day of November, 2022.
Do I hear a motion, um, for Resolution Number 828?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? ET, I've, I've said it before and I'll, and I'll say it again, that, um, give you a drink of water. But you know, you're, you, we accomplished a lot on the city council, but it pales, pales in comparison of the impact you had on our kids in our city with the Blaze program. And that's why I'd be so proud of that if I were you. Be proud of being on city council. But the Blaze program was, has been fantastic and I know you'll still be active in that. Don't look at me, Kelly. So, you know, we, you know, all, all this through council, I mean, we've been through a lot of good times and some tough times. You know, we've lost parents during that time, but, um, I mean, you're gonna, you're, it's not like y'all are dying. I mean, you're gonna be here. You're still gonna contribute, you know? So I'm looking forward to seeing what else you're gonna do with the Blaze and be, be a part of the school system and being, and being with the schools and being with the fair. I mean, you got, you got a lot of things to do. So I for one, wanna thank you, love you. You know that. And, um, we'll get together again down the road for sure on things. Anybody else?
I'd like to express the same thing, ET. I mean, I've given you a hard time. We've had a lot of good times and fun times. But again, I respect you and thank you for your service.
My, my favorite ET story was when his, uh, watch was, or his phone was going off and he kept saying it wasn't his phone. That's my favorite. I think he still does that. He was playing.
Yes, you won, ET.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, for Resolution Number 829, I've asked Jim to present that to, to Zach.
Resolution Number 829, we, the city council and the citizens of Clinton, Tennessee, commend and recognize Zach Farah for his selfless service to the citizens of Clinton.
Clinton. Whereas Zach Farrar has been a vital part of Clinton City Council, having served from December two thousand and fourteen to November twenty-twenty-two, dedicating his time to the best interest of the community, and working constantly for the betterment of its economic and cultural development, and whereas the city has benefited greatly because of his particular interest in work as the chairman of the Clinton Utilities Board, and through his support for downtown Clinton, and whereas through the performance of his duties and responsibilities, have a member of the city council, he has made excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. And whereas Zach has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact, and of his fellow public servants, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Clinton, Tennessee, that this resolution be a special means of commending Zach Farrar on his exemplary service to the city of Clinton, and express our sincere appreciation, as well as that of our citizens, to Zach for his distinguished service to our community. Be it further resolved that this resolution be placed upon the minutes of this body in recognition of Councilman Farrar and his many contributions to the city of Clinton, adopted this twentieth day of November, twenty-twenty-two. And with that, I'll add that I've learned some words from Zach, some legal terms, and that's been one of my highlights. It's like, okay, I'm gonna go home tonight and use that word in a sentence. But one of those is onus. The onus is upon you. And I've used that a lot. But again, I appreciate your friendship and service, and you've definitely added to this body.
Thank you very much.
Do I have to hear a motion to approve resolution number eight-twenty-nine?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
My wife told me to smile more, just now in the text. She said that I looked angry up here. I'm not, I'm just soaking it all in. Sorry, Molly, I hope I'm smiling now.
You know, it's, it's funny on, on the board, how fast time goes by. You know, you've been here nine years, this is my, this is my fifteenth year. I mean, ET's been here, you've been here, twelve years, I think, thirteen, thirteen, no, use one, use one less behind me. Jim and I, and Jim and Larry, we, we joined together, and it seems like a blink of an eye. But I never will forget, Jerry Shattuck called. He goes, Scott? I'm not running for councilman. And, you know, we talked a little bit about it when he didn't run, and, and the... And the first person I called was Zach. He, you were with, you were with Rex. I was going down the road, and it's funny, I said, you need to go pick a petition. He says, Scott, Molly's not gonna let me run. And I said, well, you need to talk to her, because the city needs you, and I think you do a good job, and, and he has. We got him on, um, CUB, I guess you, you became vice mayor first, been on a lot of committees, did a great job on CUB. I mean, we've done a lot of good things, and you two, ET, we've done a lot of good things that, that, you know, we just, we kind of forget about, and we're almost kind of generational, where the younger people don't remember all the good things we did early on. We did a lot of good things, and Zach, you and I agreed probably on ninety-eight percent of the things, and, and we're gonna miss you, and I, and I really mean that.
Well, thank you.
But again, you're not going anywhere. I know you'll still be active in church and school, and, and, and city government, and, and helping us out when you can. I'm, I'm sure, you know, you're, you'll probably agree, you're a phone call away.
Absolutely.
And I won't forget that. Anyone else?
Zach, you'll definitely be missed, I think. You mentioned Jerry and his legal background, your legal background. Wendy and David, you need to brush it up on your legal background. We'll need that expertise up there.
I'm not gonna use any David's words.
Thank you.
You know, I, I'll just add, kind of add to that, I'd always heard, well, you really want a lawyer on the council, because a lawyer brings a lot of different things. But having worked with Jerry and now with Zach, almost, almost of the idea, maybe we ought to have a lawyer on the council all the time. Certainly, he brings a new perspective to a lot of things, and I really appreciate his expertise in clarifying a lot of these things for us, and making it understandable for those of us who are layman.
Thank you very much. I'm sure Mr. Glenn's gonna miss me from Bagged Mills.
You might be our special guest.
You might be sitting down there next to JB.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number eight-twenty-nine passes. Any old business for us? Would you like to say anything?
I just, just how much I just love everybody, and it's been an honor and a privilege to...
Smile when you say it.
I know. To serve, and really, for those that don't know, I mean, we, we get along up here, we're, we're friends with one another. It's been a, a blessed council to be a part of, and it's been one, as, as Scott has just said, I mean, it's, it's pretty much a seven-to-zero vote, I think, consistently. And I, I don't think that's because we're just uniform, I think it's because we're doing the right things, and I think we're making the right decisions. So I look forward to with the next council, the leadership that they'll have, I'm, I'm encouraged by, by the election, and I know that there's nothing but great things ahead for this city, and just want to say, love you all, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Any old business for us? Any new business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Please adjourn.